This conference will now be recorded.
I will call the Willmar City Council meeting to order for Monday, November 16th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Maskey.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman. Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as has been presented? Make a motion to approve.
Audrey has one.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. In light of the conversation that was taking place before the meeting and the knowledge that the school is going to a distance learning model with the direction we've received from the state and the county, I was hoping that we could have a discussion with how to support staff and if staff had any questions for us regarding COVID-19. And so I would ask that that be added on to the agenda somewhere to allow us for discussion regarding meetings and any nonessential services.
Okay, so I have support of staff for COVID and nonessential services. The city administrator had also asked that we discuss if we want to go to virtual meetings for city council meetings as well, so I'd like to add that item for discussion. So that will be an additional item as well. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Osmus to approve the agenda as amended. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of November 2nd, the board of canvass minutes of November 12th, special city council minutes of November 12th, the Willmar Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of November 9th, planning commission minutes of November 4th, the accounts payable report for October 29 through November 12th, and then Myers addition minor subdivision replat for council's acceptance, the building report for month of October 2020, and for council's information, application for airport commission by Arnold Plowman.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Osmus, second.
Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Osmus to approve the consent items. Discussion.
Councilmember Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Abstained.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one abstained, and zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have a public hearing. The public call-in number is 320-335-7135, and you must dial the area code when you dial the number. With that, I will open the public hearing on the ordinance to authorize the issuance of $5 million in general obligation sales tax revenue bonds. And the action we're looking for is to adopt it, publish it, adopt it, publish it, and assign it a number, and adopt in summary. With that, I'll open the public meeting, and I'll go to Doug Green, our bond counsel. Mr. Green.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. This evening, we are having a public hearing to establish an ordinance to issue general obligation bonds. It is under city charter. The city adopts an ordinance each time it incurs a debt obligation, and typically each year, that is with our annual street improvement program, general obligation improvement bonds. But these bonds are the general obligation sales tax revenue bonds. They always have a long tongue twister names to them. So these are financing the first two projects of the, what, six sales tax projects, and it is, the initial bond issuance is for $5 million. And, Mr. Mayor, I believe we'll have a discussion after that, but you can tell me if we want to just have the initial discussion on the ordinance and then move on to the method of sale, or I can discuss that now.
I'd prefer if you talk about the method of sale now as well.
Oh, yes, sir. So, as you may remember, there's a couple ways the city can borrow money. I'd say the traditional way is to sell bonds through the public markets, where we create an offering document called an official statement. We get a credit rating. We sell the bonds competitively. Underwriters, which are investment banks, purchase those bonds and then resell them to the general public. Another way to go about doing that is to what we call a private placement. We place the bonds with one or multiple banks who have been identified before, and they hold those bonds in their own account for the life of the bonds. And then, unlike bonds sold in the public markets, they're not traded over the life of the bonds. So it's really, it's pretty simple. One has a little higher financing cost, you typically get lower interest rates, and vice versa. Over the last few years, we found it advantageous to issue our general obligation improvement bonds for the annual street improvement projects through a private placement. Because of the smaller size of the bonds, it's really been somewhat of a wash in terms of total debt service. I believe you have a memo in your packet this evening. When we get up to a little higher par amount, borrowing amount, those numbers can diverge a little bit. And I believe if you see in your packet that right now, we believe that in the public markets, that we get around, remember it's on an interest rate scale, but that average interest rate that we believe we would get is 1.37, and then, if I have 1.33 or whatever, and what we've been told we get in the private markets is a 1.73. So that's a difference in 0.4% or 40 basis points. As I mentioned before, the financing costs are a little bit less, so if we're determined to issue $5 million in bonds and we don't have to spend as much on financing costs, more of that money can be spent on construction, which is good. However, given that different interest rate, the annual average annual debt service each year is going to be about $16,000, $17,000 less, so over the life of the bonds, you know, that can add up a little bit. So those are the options in front of the council. The other policy choices, you say, well, we keep the bonds locally, and, you know, that enhances the local economy. You really can quantify what that amount is, you know, what the benefit is to local economy, but it's something to consider nonetheless.
Okay, thank you for your report. And I don't have the screen up, Mr. Grammets, that tells me if we have callers calling in. Do you have that?
No, I do not. There should be somebody in the control room. Dave should be monitoring that and alerting us if we have callers.
Either Dave or Ross.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris. We do not have any calls at this time.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So there are no calls at that point. I will close the public hearing and bring to the council for council discussion on what you are wishing to do here. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I would be willing to approve the authorization. My question is, will we have a second discussion about private versus public, or are we only approving the issuance of the bonds right now?
I believe both of those, I have not been briefed on this, so I don't know, but I would think that the council would want to discuss the placing private or placing public. So I think you certainly could introduce a resolution to adopt, publish, and assign it a number on the issuance of the 5,000, and then come back with a second motion to talk about where we're going to place it.
Okay, I will make that first motion.
So second to the first?
Second, at 5 million rather than 5,000.
The motion is made by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Schwantes, to adopt, publish, and assign a number for the issuance of 5 million, not the 5,000, which is in the report. Mr. Green.
Mayor Calvin.
Mr. Green.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. Scott might want to chime in here as well. You see in the ordinance that it does say Series 2020B, which just happened to be at that time of year where we don't know when these bonds will close. And so if it goes into 2021, they would be 2021 bonds. So Mr. Scott and I talked before this, and we would suggest that we just strike, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we just strike the Series 2020B, and whenever the bonds do sell, then we would assign the name to it. Did I get that correct?
Mr. Scott.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. I did look at the charter. The charter doesn't require that the series number be specified in the ordinance. The ordinance just needs to authorize the sale of the amount. So my recommendation would be just as Mr. Green suggested, strike Series 2020B in both the title and the body of this ordinance, with the understanding the series number will be assigned depending on the date of sale.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I was simply trying to get your attention that Mr. Green was trying to speak while I was making the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, if people can help me out here, I've got a lot of screens to watch here, and this screen is not real bright on mine. And I don't know if that means I'm not the brightest guy, if that's why they gave me the screen or not, but anyways. So we do have the authorization to issue $5 million general obligation sales tax revenue bonds, adopt, publish, and assign it a number. It has been motion and seconded. Additional discussion. And again, we'll be talking about where we want to issue that after this discussion. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Then I'll go to Councilmember Nelson again to talk about the issuance and the placement, I'm sorry, the placement, if you wanted to introduce that.
I'm not sure if I do. I'm struggling with which is the right way to go and whether we have to make that decision right now. I was told that in other years, sometimes the banks matched what was out in the public, and so I am just curious about the process. I am concerned when I see a number that's almost $200,000 or more, that sales tax would need to pay over the life of the bond to do that locally, and that creates the need to do it locally. I'm struggling with that one. So is it one or the other as far as the motion goes?
I believe to try to get this done in 2020, we should address if we want it to go private or public. And as you stated, I believe I heard you correctly, it's about $200,000 over the life of the loan, which is 13 years, which comes up to be about $15,000 a year. I know that in the past, and again, I wasn't briefed on this, so I'll just kind of shoot from the hip here, but in the past, the council felt quite strongly that it was important to try to support our local economy the best we could, knowing that those dollars that are turned over within our community are turned over probably a minimum of seven times. And I think that the highest that I recall the difference being was about five basis points. And here, we're talking about four basis points. So, Mr. Green, I don't know if you have any historical data on that or not, but I wasn't aware of the conversation that Councilmember Nelson said about how the local banks sometimes match that, so I don't have that historical perspective.
Okay, I can try, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Well, this is really just, without getting into too much bond math here, and that's really just what it is. There's two variables going on. Typically, when we issue a bond for the annual street projects, it's between a million and a half and $2 million. And so whenever you have that difference in the interest rate, the difference in the interest cost is not as great. And then it's easy for that lower financing cost to make up the difference. As you get a higher par amount, you still have about the same spread in between the interest rates, but the interest cost just grows as the larger, the larger par amount, the larger loan it is. And that's really the only thing that's going on. I did, just try to state the fact, I did ask for an updated interest rate from Brimmer last week, and they stayed with this 173. I did not say, can you meet, you know, can you meet what we think we would get in a public sale? That is exactly what happened last time for the 2020 improvement bonds. However, that spread was smaller. I'm hesitant to say, you know, they can't, because every bank has their own cost of funds, and that's different for every bank. And so I, you know, I don't want to say that, my guess is that they couldn't meet it, but, you know, I certainly don't speak for the bank, and don't necessarily know how they calculate their cost of funds on a $5 million loan over 12 years. So, you know, we can ask, but my guess is that would be a tough, that would be tough for them. But again, I can't speak for them. I'll take some context.
Thank you. Mr. Grammets, have, you know, have we had those conversations with Brimmer Bank at all?
Not on this particular issue, Mr. Mayor, but as Mr. Green stated, we did last time. But I think what I'm hearing Mr. Green say is that he asked them last week if there was any difference, and they kind of said, no, we're going to, you know, stay firm with that. We don't know exactly what the public number's going to be. We have an estimate of that, and it could be more or it could be less than this, so that spread may not be even 0.4. So at this point in time, I think it's, the basis for the decision, I think, is looking at the two variables as identified. Do you want more money upfront for construction? Or do you want to lessen how much you spend to repay the loan? And those are the two options you have before you. If you want more money upfront, you go with the private sale. You want to pay less over 12 years, you go with the public sale.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Schwantes followed by Nelson again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the phone call that was made or the conversation that was made last week, and I appreciate the work and effort of our private banks in the past, but given the spread as it is, I would make a motion that we go with the public sale offering.
Second.
I'm sorry, I missed who that was. Was that Alvarado?
No.
Maskey?
Maskey.
Motion by Schwantes, seconded by Maskey, to go with the public sale. Councilmember Nelson.
My question doesn't really apply anymore. My concern was about next year's reconstruction and the bank's ability to do that, so I'm supportive of the motion as it was made.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion, that resolution passes as well. Again, that was to place the money through a public sale. The next would be a motion to publish this in summary.
No.
Mayor Calvin, Nelson, I can make that motion.
Now staff is telling me we don't need it. I thought I saw it in one of the write-ups. It's not on this one.
Mr. Mayor, the original agenda did say publish by summary, but this ordinance is so small that it doesn't cost, it's about the same as the amount of the summary publication. So that was removed from the final agenda that went out.
Okay, I guess I saw it on the preliminary agenda, so, okay. Councilmember Nelson, I will not need that. So next, we have the, Mr. Green, thank you for the work that you've done, and we look forward to hearing what the number comes in as on that public sale, so, and we'd like to get this done in 2020 if that's possible.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pretty standard timeline. We will be going on developing the offering document, which is the official statement, and then we'll probably come back to the council, just one more formal step to authorize the sale, which is setting the time and date of the sale, and we'll likely do that in the second meeting in December, and then probably, and then likely sell at the end of the year. So we're probably not going to get the money until the latter part of January at this point, but we'll move along with the process just as soon as possible.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you for your work. Next, we have Public Works Public Safety Report from November 4th. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Our Public Works Public Safety Committee met on Wednesday, November 4th by electronic means. Members present were myself, councilmembers Osmus, Alvarado, and Nelson. Others present were our Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, our Fire Chief Hanson, our Police Chief Felton. Ms. Del Bosque was our administrative assistant there for the recording in our notes. We called the meeting to order at 5:03. The first item discussed was our public safety statistics. They should be included in this packet tonight, and they should be for your review. If anybody would like to ask any questions of either chief pertaining to these, now would be your opportunity to do so. Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move on. Our first item was for discussion. That was regarding a CGMC voluntary assessment. No action was, I'm sorry? Okay, I'll continue. No action was taken. We decided that it would be a good idea to forward this item on for the council's consideration so we can decide at this meeting tonight if there's something that we'd like to do. The Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is obviously a nonprofit, nonpartisan agency that we are well familiar with, representing our municipality. At their 2020 membership meeting, they voted to continue funding an additional environmental lobbying effort for more proactive environmental programming with voluntary contribution of 25 cents per capita. The goal of the assessment is to weigh in more so on federal and state regulations, permits, legislation, and other significant precedent-setting matters affecting cities, municipalities, counties, and whatnot. Currently, the city is a member of CGMC and the Minnesota Environmental Science and Economic Review Board as well, with an assessment of $5,909.40 per year. The membership, again, is apolitical and plays a vital role in development and implementation of Minnesota's water quality standards and clean regulatory framework. So basically, what we're looking for here in this motion after discussing, this is a voluntary assessment that the city would pay, and it is in line with what other municipalities our size do pay. The amount is $5,024, and what the committee discussed was the potential value in taking part in this and having representation in St. Paul regarding these pollution control, stormwater, water treatment, wastewater treatment, regulatory measures. We know that we do have issues surrounding that topic coming up in the very near future, and we've been kind of kicking the can down the road, not us as a city, but as a state. They've been kicking the can as far as where that regulatory bar is going to end up. And I think CGMC is looking ahead and anticipating some rulings being made in upcoming legislative sessions regarding what exactly is going to be done regarding wastewater treatment requirements and whatnot. So we thought it prudent, instead of necessarily taking a vote and making it motion-specific, we just kind of gathered all of our input and weighed in on the idea, and we thought it would be good to bring to the council as a full whether or not this was a voluntary assessment that we believe would be worth it to the city. And after asking staff, the staff is in favor of it. We have taken a look at this in the past, and for whatever reason, one, you know, one reason or another, be it political philosophy or budgetary reasons or whatnot, we've chosen not to participate in the past. We do think it prudent to reconsider our participation from a public works standpoint, and staff is in agreement with that as well. I believe our city administrator is also in agreement with that, but we would like to bring it to the council table for consideration. So if anybody would like to take action on this for means of further discussion, you may do so, otherwise it will, it will stay a discussion item for now.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that the city submit the voluntary assessment to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities for the Environmental Action Fund at 2/3 of the $5,024, with the understanding that the Willmar Municipal Utilities would submit the remaining 1/3 fee.
Councilmember Maskey. Councilmember Mesky?
I was going to ask, um, was there any-
Hold on, I thought you were looking to second. Is there a second to the motion?
Osmus, I'll second it.
Motion by Schwantes, seconded by Osmus. Councilmember Mesky?
Was there a question specific pertaining to salty discharge and where the position's going to be from the CGMC on that particular issue? Because that's going to be very critical for Wilmer's future.
Mr. Mesky, Councilmember Mesky, yes, I do believe that is included in there, along with a whole host of other items. And I wish that our Public Works Director was here to speak directly to all of the items, but it's, when I looked on it further online, it's a pretty exhaustive list. So not only that, but a whole host of other items as well. So we did weigh- we considered that, along with a lot of our wastewater treatment and discharge type issues, as well as fees and fines for various, you know, various instances that the city happens to be fined for regulatory measures. And when we're considering the large dollar scopes of all these different things, we came to the conclusion that $5,000, or two-thirds of rather, of $5,000 was a rather small price to pay. But long answer, short, yes, I do believe so.
City Administrator Grammets?
And Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers, the reason it was recommended to be split three ways is for stormwater, wastewater, and drinking water. Okay? And that's where the Wilmer Municipal Utilities comes in, on the one-third. And the issues that pop up in mid-session, unanticipated, and the CGMC is our lobbying effort for rural Minnesota. And the MISIRB is the science part of the equation. So MISIRB is non-political, a bunch of scientists cranking out so much information and what the impact is going to be on, let's say, salty discharge, that whole thing. The coalition then takes the information and then goes to St. Paul and says, this is going to be bad for our communities. Okay? So that's the role they play. And it's a host of environmental issues on each one of those three particular environmental categories, of which, you know, salty discharge is one that concerns the city of Wilmer, and is probably going to cost a lot of money if that is, you know, comes to be, that we have to deal with that. So that's why, I guess, when I received the assessment, the voluntary assessment, I said, in most other cities, you know, our size are jumping in and saying, we need to get ahead of this, rather than try and fight it after the legislation's been adopted. So, again, $5,000, you know, is a lot of money, but I think it's well worth it to continue on with the assessment.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Supportive of the motion, just seeking clarification of the third being paid by the utilities, and I believe it had been discussed, a third being paid out of the wastewater treatment fund and a third being paid out of city funds. Is that the intent of the motion?
That's what the administrator just said, I believe. Correct?
Correct.
Additional discussion?
Mesky?
Uh, Councilmember Mesky?
Yeah, just to clarify, the utility is- it has basically said that they're on board with this distribution, and that we're truly getting information that would benefit on their end.
Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers, I have been advised by the utility director that he's just waiting for- he's supportive of this and is waiting for the city council to act on it.
Additional discussion? Okay, I haven't been in favor of this in the past, and generally, I would get a letter on this, but this year I didn't get it surprisingly. Well, not really surprisingly. But, you know, if this is what council wishes to do, that's fine. But I have not been traditionally in support of this. We pay $40,888 annually to the coalition. We also get lobbying work done by the League of Minnesota Cities. And when we were talking about the local ops and sales tax, CGMC would have helped us for an additional fee, where the League of Minnesota Cities did that as part of the fee that we do pay to them. So I think we're opening up a can of Pandora's here, and they're just looking for another way to put additional dollars in their pockets. So there's the council's decision, but I have not been for this ever since this fee has been brought to the city. And again, normally, they ran it through the mayor, but this year they didn't. So, roll call.
Nelson. Nelson.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. The city administrator Grammets brought this to us, and I think he did a good job looking at the importance of it and working with the utilities and wastewater and the city. And I spoke at the committee meeting that as important as it is to pay the assessment, it is that important for us to be looking at working together between utilities, stormwater, and the city. And so I think this will help us to work together and to bring forth the light of the things that we are facing with stormwater, wastewater, and drinking water. And so I support this, and I thank Mr. Grammets for doing the homework to share the cost.
Councilmember Mesky?
Sorry for the pun, but, you know, this is putting your toe in the water to check and gauge it. And I'm telling you, if we can get any kind of real savings where they scale back some of those things, like salty discharge, this will pay for itself over many, many times. But I would say this is kind of a test run. I mean, if our lobbying efforts here are not working, I think you should pull it back. But that one issue in itself, if we're successful, will pay for itself 100 times over. But that remains to be seen. So I'm in favor of giving this a test drive and then reassess if our lobbying really was worth our money put into it.
Additional discussions? Roll call.
Councilmember Elverado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That most- that resolution passes. I'm sorry, motion passes. Next, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our second item of the night was also for information only. We had some discussion brought forth by our Public Works Director, City Engineer, regarding potential reconstruction of Second Street southeast from Trot all the way down to Olina as a project for 2021. As you can imagine, this would be a rather intensive project. The scope of the work would include a complete reconstruction of the street, all of the infrastructure and utilities underneath it. And due to the lay of the land and the landscaping and the trees and the measurements and the dimensions being as they are, it's being considered right now as being designed for one-way traffic only, with parking on one side only and a sidewalk on the other side, and- or on one side only as well. And we did also have some discussion regarding potentially Third Street as well, considering that as a project. Because this is a pretty big undertaking, the discussion about, you know, it was just a discussion at this time, but the discussion kind of is just to get the ball rolling because we understand that this would be, again, a larger project and a rather intensive project. So we will also, at our public- next Public Works meeting, we will be discussing this project in further detail and bringing those details to the council. That brings us to our next item, discussion item, which was actually an action item. And this was regarding project number 1901-a, the Fifth Street southwest reconstruction. This is regarding a change order and also authorizing final payment. So, little bit of background, project 1901-a included the reconstruction of Fifth Street southwest and a cul-de-sac off of 19th Avenue. Change order two resulted from several quantity overruns, including, but not limited to, seeding, hydraulic bonding fiber, disturbed areas of soil, additional granular foundation, rock stabilization, other geo-composites or geotextiles that were needed, and additional concrete for the curb and gutter that was replaced. So the first action item in here would be adopting a resolution approving change order number two in the amount of $31,575.07 for project 1901-a, Fifth Street southwest reconstruction. I'll enter that as a motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve change order number two in the amount of $31,575.07 for project number 1901-a, Fifth Street southwest reconstruction. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elverado?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That most- that resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to enter a motion now to accept project number 1901-a, Fifth Street southwest reconstruction, and authorize final payment to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $56,857.39.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, motion by Plowman, seconded by Elverado, for final payment to Dunick in the amount of $56,857.39. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilmember Plowman?
Just to thank- thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I just wanted to drop in with the final numbers. The original contract amount was in the amount of $345,704. We had two change orders in the amount of about $44,000. The original budget estimate was just about, just over $400,000, and the actual final contract came in at $390,000 when it's all said and done. So this is another project that we came in $10,000 under budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elverado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next item for discussion would be change order number one for project 2001-c, the West Highway 12 water main. Little bit of background, portion of water line on West Trunk Highway 12 in conjunction with the Wilmer Y project needed to be replaced. The project included existing eight-inch ductile iron water main, replacing it with 12-inch PVC for 800 feet west of 19th Street to 28th Street northwest, also replacing 12-inch ductile iron with 12-inch PVC from 28th to 30th Street. Bids were opened and awarded July 17th. GF Jedlikey was awarded the project. Change order one resulted in existing water main leakage in a couple different locations during construction activity. It was warranted repair with clamps as temporary water line, but the fixes had to be made. This change order is in the amount of $4,490.84. So far, I believe, our, as far as the budget goes, the ASBID budget was $330,000 approximately. We had a contingency budget of about $33,000. That was an estimated $363,000. And it looks as though we're on track with the change order to be at $335,000 respectively. So that's a difference of approximately $30,000. So, with that said, I will make a motion authorizing change order number one in the amount of $4,490.84 for project number 2001-c, West Trunk Highway 12 water main.
Second. Nelson?
Motion by Plowman, seconded by Nelson, to approve change order. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elverado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had no more business for the evening, so we adjourned, and I would move to follow the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to follow the minutes of the Public Works Committee. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Plowman on the southeast Second Street project, has there been any discussion yet which direction the traffic would flow?
I do believe we're going to be getting into that in a lot more detail in the weeks to come, specifically this Wednesday. We'll be talking about Second Street, and I believe it was also asked of a committee member that anything regarding Third Street be considered because we would obviously want to, if we were going to go with one-way traffic, we would want to alternate, which, you know, on streets. So we do not have actual diagrams at this time, but I think, and I thank our Public Works Director for seeing it prudent to bring this item up early in the process so that we can ferret these things out. We should know on Wednesday, we should have a better idea which direction it's actually going to be going.
Because this item was brought up when I lived in the fourth ward, and we had community policing meetings then, and there was no consensus. The neighbors, they all disagreed on which direction it should go. So, got to figure that out first, so.
I agree. Sometimes a lack of a decision is simply a decision to have a lack of decision. And so our committee is set on hearing some good facts and taking in all the information that our city engineer has to bring to us, and hopefully have a good, solid plan and package to bring for the entire council to consider.
Good. Thanks.
Councilmember Elverado?
I was going to ask Councilmember Fagerly what the consensus was on the direction, but he clarified that there was no consensus on direction. So being on that committee, we'll have to come up with an answer. Thank you.
It might change now because there's more rentals on Second Street, but back in the 90s, it was more owner-occupied. So hopefully, it won't be that tough of a decision.
Additional discussion? Motion made and seconded to follow the minutes. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Elverado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have the Finance Committee report. Councilmember Nelson of November 5th.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. The Finance Committee for council met at 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, November 5th, 2020, using teleconference. Those in attendance were Councilmembers Nelson, Fagerly, Osmus, and Plowman. Others on the teleconference were Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Schwantes, Councilmember Elverado, and Councilmember Mesky, City Administrator Grammets, City Clerk Thompson, Planning and Development Services Director Rampstead, and West Central Tribune reporter Shelby Lynnrood. The first item was to review the mayor's proposed 2021 budget. The plan was to review the fund balances and revenues of the proposed budget book. City Administrator Grammets reviewed the overall fund balance and noted that audit results indicated the city is in good position regarding the status of its fund balances. Questions were asked about the differences between the various balances that are restricted, committed, and available for use if necessary to fund- committed, and available for use if necessary to fund the twenty twenty-one operating budget shortfall as a possi-, as a result of possible reductions in local government aid due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. These questions will be addressed at the next financial meet, financial committee meeting. Administrator Grammets also reviewed the budget narrative. That information is listed in the minutes here. Um, just the, just the only addition, I think, that was from what we didn't receive from the mayor was just an indication of LGA and how hopefully we will find out the information on that as soon as possible. He reviewed, um, debt expenditures and that we have less expenditures of about two hundred and fifty thousand for outside engineering services, and, um, also that rental income was down since mid-Minnesota development has moved out, and that park and rec facilities' rentals may continue to decline due to COVID-nineteen. There are potential revenues that were not included in the mayor's proposed twenty twenty-one budget, franchise fees of two hundred and fifty thousand from Center Point Energy, a larger than proposed tax levy increase, and sale of excess land, and we will be receiving a map of our, the land that we own, um, to be reviewed also. Um, the next Finance Committee meeting will be held on November nineteenth to continue the discussion of the fund balances and revenues as well as the operating and capital expenditures. And, um, we will review on the nineteenth if we need to have another meeting on November We did have five resolutions. Um, that information was taken for information.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
I have a question on that part, or would you like that to come at the end of the meeting?
No, you can go ahead.
Um, during the presentation, uh, when you were talking about staff positions, uh, it was mentioned, uh, the positions that I had included in my budget, uh, when I presented it to this, to the council. In the position of the forensic person for the police department was included in that presentation. Um, are you going to be talking about those positions at a later time? Um, I had not included that position in the budget, so just wondering if you're considering adding that into the budget, seeing it was a discussion point at the meeting.
Um, we will be reviewing that later. I don't believe there's any indication as to what's being added or subtracted at this point in time. It, we are basically just trying to get discussion so that we can make decisions in the future. So, um, if that was, I don't remember the specific discussion regarding that, I do remember that it wasn't included in the budget.
Thank you.
Okay. On to action items. Our first was the resolution for the deferred senior citizen assessments in past, um, projects. Um, staff explained that this is following our municipal code and the city's comprehensive assessment policy, which offers the option to defer special assessments to senior citizens, disabled, or active military deferrals based on certain income guidelines. And I would, um, make, bring the motion forward to defer the special assessment, um, as was listed for thirty-six hundred dollars, and I would enter that motion now.
So moved. Motion been seconded, uh, mo- motion was made by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Fagerly, uh, to, uh, defer senior citizen assessments in the amount of thirty-six hundred dollars. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Our second resolution was assert, to certify the Wilmer Uni- Municipal Utility liens, and, um, staff explained that, again, due to the city code sixteen one twenty-seven, that utility bills, um, represent a lien on the applicable real properties receiving u- utility services. The Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission has offered the owner of each property the right to request an appearance before the commission to make those objections to payments. After holding that meeting, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities adopted resolution number thirty-three on September twenty-eighth, requesting that the Wilmer City Clerk certify the unpaid utility charges as a lien on the, on real property. The total to be certified to the Kandai County Auditor for collection on the twenty twenty-one property tax statement is thirty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents affecting thirty-two parcels. It was moved and seconded to recommend the resolution certifying the thirty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents to the county auditor, and I would enter that motion now.
Plowman second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Plowman to certify for the thirty-two parcels, thirty-six thousand four eighty-seven and twenty-four cents. Discussion. I have a question. Um, the Wilmer Assemblies of God Church had made a donation to the utilities to pay off a number of these, uh, past due payments. Uh, was that addressed at all or talked about?
No.
Wasn't talked about?
Mayor Calvin.
Yes.
I was trying to remember the timeframe of this. I think we were following the protocol that it had been brought to us by the utilities, and so, um, I'm trying to remember if these are last year's.
Okay.
That come forward? Does any, uh, can staff answer that question?
Staff know the answer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, these are the deferments that the utilities has sent to us, and that would be from the period of last year when they certified to us through this year. You know, I would say like from August of nineteen to August of twenty twenty.
Mayor Calvin.
Councilmember Nelson.
In light of your question, would you like this table to have this answered before we, um, do this, or is there a deadline that we need to meet?
Uh, City Clerk Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we do have to get these certified to the county auditor here. Usually it's by the fifteenth, but being the fifteenth was yesterday, you know, they are accepted here as long as we approve it here tonight.
Okay, so.
Mayor Calvin.
Uh, Councilmember Nelson.
Can we go ahead and approve this and then ask for clarification on your question?
Certainly, that would be fine. It's just interesting that the utilities had their action on September twenty-eighth, and now we're here almost two months later, and again, dealing with an issue that's last minute that has to have a decision by the council tonight because it's the last night we can do it. Um, I know my frustration of that continues to rise, and other council members have talked to me about that in the past of how, uh, we get so many things, and we had to have a special meeting last week because stuff got left to the last minute, and it looks like we're doing it again, so, and I think we just need to move, move forward, so. Motion made in second, additional discussion. Councilmember, uh, Osmus.
When was, um, the money donated from the, by the Assemblies of God?
I read it in the paper, it was this summer sometime, I don't know what the date was.
Then who holds on to that? I mean, the utilities?
It was donated to the utilities where the money was donated.
Okay. So, then it would be up to the utilities to know if this, if some of those have been paid and they used up all that money, and then this is what's left? That's what we need to get clarified?
Yeah. I, I think like Councilmember Nelson said, we kind of just move it ahead, so it's just discouraging that it's another late item, so. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Councilmember Nelson.
Mayor Calvin, I believe that, um, Mr. Scott would like to speak.
Okay. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just do have some information that might help the council in response to your questions. The, uh, Utilities Commission, it appears they approved the donation from Wilmer Assemblies of God Church on, uh, July twenty-seventh of this year. The donation was on the condition that it be applied to specified utility holder accounts. My assumption, and it's only an assumption, would be that the utility has done that, and they would not be reflected in any amounts, um, that you'd be certifying today, um, just based on the timeline.
Thank you. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Um, our next item was the liquor license fee partial refund, which was dealt with at the special meeting, um, last week. Um, and it was the recommendation after reviewing this that we do have a special meeting so that we were able to use the CARES funds, um, to do that, and that transaction did take place. So, I don't know that we need to do any action item on that since it's already done. Our, our next item was the Airport Operations Agreement Resolution, and staff presented a three-year operation, airport operations supervisory agreement with Oasis Arrow, Inc. for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and explained that there were no changes from the previous agreement, which terminates December thirty-first, twenty twenty. The fee will remain the same at forty-eight thousand per year, with Eric Rundigan, Airport's Operations Supervisor, continuing to perform day-to-day operations necessary to keep the Wilmer Municipal Airport safe, accessible, and operational on daily basis. Mr. Rundigan will also provide the staff necessary to assist him with the operation and the supervision of the airport and all of the city property located thereon, including routine minor repairs, um, properly securing doors, et cetera. It was noted that he cannot doubt, he cannot delegate his responsibilities under this agreement without prior written approval of the city. And before I make the motion, I would say that there were lots of, um, positive things, um, said about the operations, and so it is, um, I'm pleased to make the motion to review or to recommend, um, approving the Airport Operations Agreement with Oasis Arrow, Inc., for the term twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three as presented.
Plowman second.
Motion been made by Nelson, seconded by Plowman to approve an agreement with Oasis Air for Airport Operations for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. Discussion. I, again, would like to just echo what Councilmember Nelson said in that, uh, it is very nice to have, uh, Oasis Air handling this, and they're doing a very good job, and, um, I used to get phone calls regularly, and I cannot remember the last time I've had a phone call on a concern on the airport, so this was a nice move, so, thank you, and, uh, I do agree that this is a great, uh, arrangement that we do have. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Our next item was for information only, but it was regarding the Renaissance Zone's use of deed funds, and we've listened and heard about this few things, few times before, and I think things have been worked out, and so it, uh, was pleased to hear the update on the five-year district, um, with that. Um, I wanted to skip down, let me find it here. Um, the Planning and Development Services Department will partner with the Kandai County H R A, who administrator the, who will administer the incentive for twenty twenty-one. A fee of fifteen percent of the project, ten thousand two hundred of the sixty-eight thousand dollars will be charged to the deed account, not to the applicant. For said fee, the H R A will meet the commercial, meet with commercial property owners to determine the scope of the work, prepare contract bids, solicit bids, award bids, prepare closing documents, collect, um, owner portion of funds, complete closing, record documents, inspect, um, during construction, and, uh, pay contractors, track projects, and report to deed. The goal is to award as many storefronts, matching loans, grants, up to the remaining deed balance of sixty-eight thousand, which could be six to thirteen projects. It was the consensus of the Finance Committee to support the recommendation to move forward with the Renaissance Zone storefront renovation incentive program as presented, and that was for information only. Our next item was the Fund Balance Designation Resolution. The fund balance policy designates the various types of fund balances, including non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. This is to be reviewed as a result of the December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen Audit Report, which was recently presented to the Finance Committee and Council. It was moved and seconded and passed to recommend that resolution adopting the revised fund balance as presented, and I would enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made in second, and motion by Nelson, seconded by Osmus to adopt the revised fund balance policy as presented. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion, that resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. And our last resolution was to approve the two thousand nineteen budget manage, management policy. Staff explained that pursuant to the auditor's recommendation, the proposed budget management policy had been drafted that directs the council to take action when the budget is exceeded and how the deficit will be covered. It was moved and seconded to recommend the, a resolution adopting that policy, and I would enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Fagerly to adopt the budget management policy as presented. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Our last discussion items were tabled until the next Finance Committee meeting, which will be this Thursday, and that was all of the business to come before the committee, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion was made by Nelson, seconded by Osmus to file the minutes. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson, I just have one comment. Uh, thank you, uh, for adjusting your, uh, your agenda to handle the budget issues at the beginning of your meeting and, uh, handling the other, uh, information later. It was very helpful for me personally, and I want to thank you for doing that, so. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance amending Wilmer Ordinance sixteen, uh, ten sixty, zoning ordinance. Uh, Dr. Ramstead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Staff seeks two motions tonight. The first motion is to introduce and set public hearing for the December seventh, twenty twenty city council meeting for the ordinance amending Wilmer's Ordinance ten sixty, known as the Wilmer Zoning Ordinance, by requiring affordable housing plans for certain projects, establishing open zoning in the Renaissance Zone, and adding a new Article Four to the city code, chapter fourteen, establishing, excuse me, inherited designation process. The second motion is to pu- publish by summary the public hearing notice for the December seventh, twenty twenty city council meeting for the ordinance amending Wilmer's The second motion is to publish by summary the public hearing notice for the December 7th, 2020 City Council Meeting. For your consideration, I provide the following overview. On May 4th, 2020, the City Council adopted the Renaissance Zone, which is a new zoning overlay encompassing the central business district and adjacent neighborhoods. The district is a five-year pilot program intended to encourage economic development. The intent of the district is to offer incentives to development within Wilmer's poorer census tract and to offer greater flexibility relative to underlying zoning requirements that would otherwise be imposed. The proposed amendments tonight are regulated primarily by Section 12 of the Zoning Ordinance, which established the Renaissance Zone District. The Planning Commission reviewed and approved the ordinance over two meetings on October 21st and November 4th. For council consideration is the amended ordinance that contains final additional development incentives and protections for the Renaissance Zone, including the open zoning approval process, creating a heritage district, and a voluntary heritage designation program, and affordable housing requirements as follows. So for the voluntary heritage designation, this protects buildings, site uses, structures, objects, and districts that are recognized for their historical, architectural, archaeological, or cultural importance as designated by the City of Wilmer pursuant to local heritage designation ordinances and by voluntary participation by the property owner. The downtown heritage district ensures that any new construction is contextually designed in relation to the existing buildings and the urban environment as determined by committee review and using a rubric which was attached. The open zoning is a process of individual project review through which a proposed use is not allowed under the existing requirements of the underlying zoning district, but which promotes and encourages adaptive reuse of perhaps heritage-designated structures or open lots. Contextual use and creativity, density, mixed-use housing, entertainment uses, a healthy, equitable, and resilient community, and pedestrian-scale streetscapes are a number of the goals that can be granted as a conditional use permit under the Section 12. Affordable housing is a component of receiving TIF or tax abatements within the Renaissance Zone. The reason is, is that since the zone is also the poorest census tract in the City of Wilmer, the proposed requirement is for a 5% or one unit of affordable housing, whichever is greater, to ensure a replacement rate for any existing affordable housing that may be displaced by new development. Also, there is a 25% maximum limit on the number of affordable housing units in any development, which ensures that each development and the entire neighborhood offers housing opportunities to all economic classes, in the buildings and in the entire neighborhood, that they don't become isolated or exclusive to one economic type. The Planning Commission required that the affordable housing component be the same area defined as the Renaissance Zone, but not be part of the five-year pilot program, so that it would survive if the Renaissance Zone were to end. And therefore, an amendment to Section 8 of the Zoning Ordinance stipulates that. It's the same area as defined as the Renaissance Zone, does not define as the Renaissance Zone. With that, I open it up to any questions you may have.
Council, do you have any questions for our Planning Development Director, Dr. Ramsden? Councilmember Alvarado.
Couple of things. What is classified, how do you classify a heritage, heritage building, or is it based on age, or how is that determined?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. The, it's very subjective. What we have initially done is, City Planner Swedberg and myself drove around the Renaissance Zone and selected projects that we felt were architecturally significant, just to create a basis list. That list is going to be turned into a package of fact sheets on those properties, which will then be given to the Planning Commission to review, and they can add properties to it or throw them out. And those properties will become the qualified properties for property owners that would like to volunteer. There's also going to be an avenue for people to nominate other people's homes or their own home or a commercial property. So there'll be a number of ways to do it, but it is a subjective process. It is not a, it is not a strict sort of a architectural or heritage process.
Thank you for that. And the other, the other thing that I was gonna commend you on is the, the having the housing affordable for all eco, economic classes, and having that to be carried forward beyond the five-year window of the Renaissance Zone. I think that's important for the city, that we be inclusive. I think we're that kind of community, and so that's forward-thinking, and I appreciate your team doing that. Thank you.
Additional comments?
Dr. Ramsden, I want to thank you for your work on this project. I know you put countless number of hours into this. I know you and I started talking about this quite some time ago, and it reminded me when I was downtown, downtown St. Paul, looking at a project that you had done down there. And that project is a very nice project next to a fire station. It used to be one, but now I think it's eight. But I think there's a grocery store in there, and then this housing above it, and-
The Penfield, yes.
Yes, yes, a very nice project. And I drove by it two weeks ago, and I thought, oh, man, that's that project Dr. Ramsden worked on. So thank you for the work that you've done on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I know you and your staff have worked very hard on this project, and I really look forward to this moving forward, because I think this will be good for our downtown area, so.
We're excited. We have a number of people that are interested in the, in the program, so hopefully something will happen soon.
Sounds great. So is there somebody that wants to introduce the motion?
I'll introduce the first one, to set a public hearing for December 7th, 2020, at 7:02, for amending the Wilmer Ordinance 1060, which is the zoning order.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Fagerly, seconded by Councilmember Alvarado, to introduce and set a public hearing for December 17th for ordinance number 1060. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye. Sorry.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion, or that resolution, that motion passes. Next, we'll be looking to publish the ordinance by summary of motion for that.
I'll make that motion to publish. Second.
Motion by Osmus, seconded by Fagerly, to publish the ordinance by summary. Discussion. Again, to, Councilmember Meskey's not here present, but I know he would want us to say that, make sure that it's available in all forms of electronic communications and available at City Hall. Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Meskey.
Absolutely, aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. Next, we have a discussion point for supporting staff for COVID and non-essential services. Councilmember Nelson.
I just was hoping that we could reach out to staff, but also have a conversation in light of the fact that we both received information from both the state and the county and the medical community about staying home and wearing masks, and I just am concerned about if we're doing our part to limit the exposure that people have, and especially with our non-essential services, and to protect our staff. And so I did reach out to Mr. Gramm, just to ask the question, and I think for us to understand, are there council decisions that need to be made? And we did empower him, and so I just thought it'd be good for us to hear and review some of that information in light of the fact that the school district is going to district learning, and just to do our part as elected officials in the City of Wilmer.
Okay. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We made the news on WCCO tonight. Dr. Perkinsmith, co-chair for the CARES organization, indicated that we had a positivity rate of 10 to 30%. She was making a plea for people to stay home, if they could stay home. They are, we are seeing that our, our people in the hospital are being taxed, stressed, and we've got to, we've got to work together as we always do, and I think that we have to, if we have to close the city office down to keep people safe, I believe that that's going to be the prudent thing to do. I think people are going to understand that this is a real, a real serious concern. We're seeing states closing down, so I think we have to be proactive and set the example for our community, and we have to scale things back, we have to scale things back. Thank you.
Additional discussions? Mr., Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Meskey.
Just a question. Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado, for those numbers. We did receive a letter, of course, last week. Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Mayor, that said we were over 5, but under 10. I got notification that our church has moved to completely, we have a color system to a red system where there's no activities, and they quoted a 20% positive test rating, which seems to concur with what Councilmember Alvarado said. Do we know, do we have gotten an official number from the state? Because if we've gone from a 5% increase in one week to an excess of 20 plus in one week, that's a very, very frightening trend that we can't continue. So do we know where we are today?
Well, I, I looked at the numbers this morning that were presented by Candyway County to us last week, and those were looking more on that 5% rate, so I'm not sure where the numbers are coming, 10 to 30%. I'm just going and looking at an email here that we received this afternoon, and I'm not seeing the numbers on that. It's just got the, I'm not seeing the numbers on that, but the numbers that were presented to us by Candyway County Emergency Management and by Candyway County Public Health had those numbers closer to that 5% number, but I had not heard the 10 to 30% that Councilmember Alvarado talked about. I'm not sure where those numbers came from.
I, I, that was presented, thank you, I'm sorry, that was presented by Dr. Smith on the television.
Yeah, I'm not denying that, Councilmember Alvarado, I'm just saying, I have not seen anything that has that number, those numbers in it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, I'm trying to read through emails here real quick as we're doing this.
Hey, I was trying to remember when we decided to shut things down, and in particular, I think I am worried about the community center, senior citizens. I have reached out to Mr. Gramm with concerns about the auditorium in the past, and I, I'm just concerned whether we are leading or if we need to take steps to shut down those non-essential services to support our population and with that. I didn't remember for sure how we did that, and so I wanted to make sure if we had the opportunity tonight at a City Council meeting to figure out if we're empowering the administrator or what steps we would take if we need to do that.
Yeah, Councilmember Nelson, how we did it last time is that I had issued an executive emergency order, and then that was affirmed by the council, and that, that was when the first Stay Safe Order was issued. I believe that's what the governor called it, was the Stay Safe Order. And so that's, that's how it happened the last time. I mean, what I heard our administrator tell us last time that we talked about this as a group is that, you know, he's more than comfortable to make the decision, but that it sure helps him, and I don't want to speak for him. If I'm not speaking here right, Mr. Gramm, correct me. But if the elected officials kind of put a little push behind it, it really helps him. I think that's what you had said. Is that still correct, Mr. Gramm?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
You're, you're, you would like some direction, is what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah, you know, I've always found that, you know, the more heads making, you know, decisions, the better the decision is, and I would, I would look at, I guess I would look at dropping down probably accessibility. Maybe at City Hall, kind of take one step back. As far as the auditorium, some concerns have come up that not a lot of people are really paying attention to the six-foot distancing, much less while they're, they're all shoulder to shoulder putting their shoes back on after basketball, and they're not wearing masks. So I've been trying to have staff enforce, you know, the, the six-foot distance and the wearing of masks when you're not playing basketball and that sort of thing, but it's getting tougher. And I think that's what's going on in the state. It's been going on so long that the edge is kind of getting rounded off, and, and people are letting things slide a little bit. So, I mean, I don't have any problem making decisions, but I, I would really, you know, help or ask for any guidance that the council could give me, because I think the department heads and I can probably make, you know, good, sound decisions. But in the next, in the next day, in the newspaper, if half the city council is saying, well, we should have never closed the civic center down, I want to, I want to have a collective whole make, make that decision so that we're one solid position when we go out to the public. I don't like on Monday making a decision and Wednesday reversing it, which we had early on. That's a, that's a bad feeling for me to bounce back and forth between, yes, you can use the park, no, you can't use the park, I guess, I guess you can use the park, and I don't want to repeat that. And so that's why I think I've had that conversation with the mayor, saying, any guidance would be much appreciated, so that you're the elected people, the citizens elected you to help, but I can carry it out. So any comments and recommendations and suggestions that you would have help staff fulfill your expectations, so to speak. So that's where, I guess, I'm at. I can reinforce all of the rules and regulations, have staff, you know, walking through our facilities. We do have the recreational guidelines that are still in place. You know, the governor did tear everything down. He just said, you know, no bars after 10 o'clock, and, you know, gatherings got to be smaller, and et cetera. So we can, we can take a step back. One of the questions, you know, that I posed to the City Council, and you'll probably be talking about that next, is just, you know, the meeting in person of the City Council, I think this, this question is going to be on the county board's agenda tomorrow. It may be a moot question, because if they decide to shut this meeting room down, and they're not going to meet in, in person, that may shut us down also, you know, just by default. But I think, I think what I'm seeing the governor do is saying, numbers are spiking, numbers are going up, whether it's 15 or 20% is almost immaterial, they're going up. What are we going to do to help reduce that and eliminate exposure? And, I mean, I can, you know, shut City Hall front door down and by appointment, you know, allow people in, that's, that's not a problem. We can take a step back. But I just want, like I said, I don't want Monday to make a decision and Tuesday to reverse it, and Wednesday to kick it back again. So that's, I want to, I want to make a decision, and everybody is good with it, so that we don't bow to pressure.
Councilmember Osmus, followed by Councilmember Meskey.
Thank you. I guess I was wondering if you take into account how staff feels, if they can operate better in their office, and if they feel they can stay in their bubble to get their work done, if that's adequate, or is there, is there- Or is there, is there not enough space for people not to have contact, that that shouldn't be an option? I don't know how those decisions were made the last time exactly.
Yeah, the, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the decision was more dictatorial last time. It came top-down. And then it started opening back up, you know, top-down. And that was one of the bits of information that came back to me that, you know, well, you know, we could have talked about it first. And, and that's what I propose to do tomorrow, was, you know, get the staff together, you know, get the department heads at city hall and talk about what the impact is, what they think taking a half a step back would look like for their department. Because like, finance is in a different situation than administration by the front door. That, you know, very rarely does the public ever go to finance. They're within their own little area and, and not that concerning as long as they're comfortable with it, okay? And, and follow the separation and the masks and the whole thing. So it really, what we're really talking about is the main entryway administrative staff, clerical staff at city hall, because the police are going to continue to do what they're doing, the public works are going to continue, which is the majority of the city employees. You're really talking about city hall staff and then secondarily our other locations that the public accesses, like the civic center, anything indoors now, given the weather. We're not talking about baseball diamonds and football fields. So it'll be the civic center and the auditorium and the, and the community center. So in light that, you know, it's going up, is it reasonable to talk to Park and Rec who operate the civic, or the community center and say, what do you think we should do? And, and the answer is yes. So that's, that's what my plan was to do on, on each one of the, of the properties.
Councilmember Maskey.
I think that's a good plan. I know we put in place plans to pivot if we had to do that. I think there is a big difference between a 5 percent testing positive rate going on versus a, a 20 percent in the span of a week. And that sort of changes the game. Not knowing where that is, it makes this conversation sort of, it's mooted, because it really matters where those numbers are. If we're, we're doing a trajectory that went from a 5 percent to a 20 percent in a week, the pivot has to happen. And, you know, I get an employee's comfort level in working within the parameters of this, because I'm one of those where I work, I continue to do that. However, when you get to numbers like that, that becomes more of a public safety issue beyond that. So I like the fact that we're looking at those indoor, indoor places, but even city hall. If we start exceeding those, those huge numbers, we're prepared to pivot, and we may have to do that. You'll have my support if you say those numbers are now too high and pivot. What that number threshold is, I have no idea what it should be. However, I can tell you, going from three times, if it went from five to 15 in a week, we're definitely not doing what we're supposed to be doing. If we continue at 5 percent, I'm very comfortable continuing to do what we're doing as a community because we're doing the right things. And so I guess I will leave it up to the city administrator to, to make that decision. You'll have my support if we need to pivot, because that's how we have this design. I know we're going to talk about the council meetings and whether they should be virtual or not. We went to a high red system, so individuals could make that choice. But if it starts getting so high, it's more of a public safety issue, then I think we pivot back to a digital format. So I'm a little at a loss about knowing how much of an increase is happening. I know it's just generic, it's getting larger. But in light of some of the numbers that Councilmember Alvarado shared here, if those are reality, that's, those are numbers where I started saying pivoting might be something we need to do.
Okay, at the risk of making a suggestion here and having it overturned, the report from Candyway County Public Health on Thursday had cumulative positive tests of 7.4 percent and weekly positive tests of 12.8 percent. Now, you have to understand that that data is closing on near a half, half, half a week ago, and we all know the numbers are just exploding. What I would like to do is to recommend to the council that we allow the city administrator to use his judgment, but that the administrator strongly consider closing all city buildings to outside use with the exception of appointments through January of 2021. The reason for that is I listened to the governor's press conference today. They say we're in a three-week vacuum where if we stop the virus today, it would take three weeks to get through the system. That includes the healthcare system, that includes the hospitals, and that includes the ICUs. And that is the reason I'm making the recommendation I am. It gives us through the holidays. It supports our medical staff in the decisions that they have to make. And as councilmembers have stated, numerous councilmembers have stated, it's a position that we have a duty to protect the welfare and public safety of our communities, and that would get us through the holidays with our staff. I know there are businesses and institutions that have went to distance requirements through June. So this would get us a time to reevaluate starting in January again. But I'm willing to have any amendments to that, but I think we need to give some, some serious ground for a city administrator to stand on.
Are you looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion for that.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to restrict all city buildings except for appointments through January 1 of 2021. Councilmember Nelson.
The motion and the second, I was, was what I was wondering if you wanted for your recommendation. So I'm supportive of that. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
So that would include the civic center and hockey?
Yes, it would. It would include all city, all city facilities. The administrator would have the ability to move that around, but the direction that we're giving him is that with the numbers that Councilmember Alvarado shared with us, which I believe to be true, if that is indeed the case, we need to take drastic measures. It's my opinion. Councilmember Maskey.
I'll be an optimist or a devil's advocate, or however you want to slice it. But if those numbers come down and they get back to a 5 percent threshold, there is no reason, I would say, to keep those facilities closed. That is, the 5 percent is what I read with that letter. That was, once you get to 5 percent, you kind of put on warning. I would say if you can achieve a 5 percent again and you can pivot back. But I like the premise, and I, and I don't know what those numbers are, but you have to have the ability to go back as well. I don't like the restriction that we're just going to go with a calendar, because really, this virus is dictating the calendar. And so when it rises, you pivot away, and when it, when it, when they fall, you can go back in. So I, I guess, I get it's clean. I just, I want the city administrator to have the ability to open it back up if those numbers drop, which I hope they do. I don't think they will, but I hope they do.
Okay, and I believe the city administrator would certainly bring that back to us. I mean, we're meeting every two weeks between now and the end of the month, or end of the year. So if he had a recommendation on that. Mr. Gramm, does that give you clear direction? Additional discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
So what would this do about our contract with the Warhawks?
I would anticipate, Mayor and City Council, that we would have a discussion about that contract.
I think there's a lot of things that will be affected. All of you received the same email that I did in regards to opening up our community center. And, you know, so we did make a decision on that following that email. I think that we can respond. We meet in another two weeks. If we have to call an emergency city council meeting or a special meeting, not an emergency, but a special meeting, we can meet within three days if we have to make a decision, change something. I'm very much in agreement with what the administrator stated, that we should not be vacillating, we shouldn't be moving in and out of the equation. We should be firm in our, our decision. We should stand behind our decision, and we should continue moving that decision forward in a positive direction in the interest of public safety. Additional discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
I'm just thinking of the different facilities and the functions. And part of the issue with the community center the last time was the meals on, or the, the dining. If, if they're closed, I believe Brenda was still in the facility, they were doing different projects and stuff there. And then I think she also worked with Public Works on some other projects as well. But would they still be able to do drive-up food delivery? Okay.
I believe, I believe we're getting into the logistics of, of, but these are good questions, but I think that we need to let our administrator make those decisions.
I just, my, my only thought was if we're saying hard and fast, shut down, I'm just thinking there are some things that, that common sense would dictate that have to continue.
You have to understand that that's the highest-risk population.
I know.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Nay.
Plowman.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerley.
No.
Five ayes, three nays.
The motion passes. Next, we have the discussion to be had about the city council going to virtual meetings. I would recommend the city council go to virtual meetings after tonight. And we attend all of our, our meetings by the avenues that the administrator sends out, whether that be GoToMeeting or Zoom or Teams or whatever it is. We predominantly have been using GoToMeeting as our platform. I think it's been working well.
Still moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to go to virtual city council meetings whenever possible and all meetings for the city. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerley.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. Before we go to council member announcements, I just want to make a couple of comments. I was on the radio this past week, and I want to say the same thing again tonight. Wear your mask, social distance, only get in groups of 10 or less, stay in your family unit, stay home for Thanksgiving, and wash your hands and stay home if you're sick. If we do these things, we will go a long ways. I heard a report yesterday on how many ICU beds were available in the state of Minnesota, and you best not need an ICU bed. There are not a lot of ICU beds available. Our hospital is very well-equipped, our staff is trained at our hospital, our medical professionals are doing a phenomenal job, but as Councilmember Alvarado said, they're getting tired. And so we need to do everything we can to try to slow the spread of this horrendous virus. With that, council member announcements, I'll start to my right, Councilmember Fagerley.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you. I would also support that I've heard comments from our members of our medical community that they're wore out. So if you know of someone who is serving on those lines, please do something extraordinary to say thank you, or a kind action to support them or whatever, because they really are putting in a lot of hours, and it's very stressful, and I'm sure it would be appreciated.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I would like to second the thank you to our medical professionals. I know this is a really hard time, and just like the mayor, I want to say, please wear your masks, be careful, this is serious.
Councilmember Osmus.
Pass.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Two things. None of us like this to be shut down, but I think that hopefully we will all support this and look at how, if this helps us to open up faster, then we've done the right job for our community. And so I hope that we will stand united to support the decisions that we made tonight. Second thing, I just wanted to share the opportunity, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is having their virtual fall conference this week. It is free. It was supposed to be in-person here in Wellner, Minnesota, and it is not, so it's virtual. And I would encourage you, if you can jump on, to go to their website, check it out, you can register and see what's going on and join in on that. So I would encourage you to participate. So I'll quit with that.
Councilmember Maskey.
Aye.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody for taking the other sides. It's nice to have the political season behind us, so thank you for that. I'm going to share the Food Help phone numbers. Food Help is 235-2641. Again, that's 235-2641. Second Harvest, 800-365-0270. Again, that's 800-365-0270. Celebrate the Lights is still going on, they're looking for volunteers. If you can do that next weekend, they're looking for helpers. And I know Thanksgiving is just around the corner. It's been a tough year. If you're healthy, be thankful. There's people that we know that have lost moms and that sort of thing, so be thankful for good health. And I think we're making the right decision to try to stay healthy. So happy Thanksgiving to all. Thank you.
Councilmember Plowman.
I'll pass tonight, thank you.
Committee announcements, Finance.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. The Finance Committee full council is scheduled to meet this Thursday at 5:00. The agenda is out there in the Dropbox and out on the website. It is strictly discussion items, there are no action items on the finance agenda, and so hopefully we will be able to have a good discussion we didn't, weren't able to have the last time on, on getting to understand that information to help us make decisions. So any questions regarding any information would be helpful to send to the administrator or to Mr. Oakins so that we can have a good discussion. So look forward to that on Thursday.
Labor.
Labor will be meeting next Monday, November 23, 6:15 PM.
Public Works, Public Safety.
Public Works will meet this Wednesday, the 18th, 5:00 PM. Electronically, the agenda is posted in the Dropbox.
Community Development.
No meeting.
Let our team have most adjourned.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, we're adjourned.